Good evening and welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Baratsky.
Yes.
Rothman.
I'm here.
De Placido.
Here.
Vaughn. Brown.
Here.
Weinberg.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Depone.
Here.
Carswell. Siegelmann.
Here.
Bowe.
Here.
Thriveber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Veggie.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Thank you. Please note that Commissioners Carswell and Vaughn, along with Mr. Manfredi, are excused this evening, and may we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have no announcements this evening, so we will move right into public comment on matters that are on the agenda this evening. And I'll ask anyone in the room who wishes to comment on matters before the Board this evening to please come forward. And if there are none, we'll see if there's anyone on Zoom.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
Yeah, so I would like to talk about the York and Susquehanna issue with the payment that's being made. I am wondering, besides this payment, what payments we have yet to expect that are just our payments in regards to those properties that were supposed to be originally part of the EDC and now are being funded fully by Abington. So, and I don't know if the county funding that we have is being repaid by Abington, or so this one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars here is added to what to make our bill so far, thus far?
Tara, do you have any?
Can I have an answer to that?
We're working on it, Ms. Lehman.
Well, first, if I could clarify, the amount is in fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, not the hundred and fifty-two, and not to my knowledge of any other payments that are outstanding.
Okay.
So the only payment so far, well, that was just for the remediation. Other costs have certainly been incurred in purchasing the properties and sending them through the authority, or has that not been anything from the township? Is that what you're saying? That none of that was paid for by the township?
This project has all been grant-funded from the multimodal grants and the PENDOT multimodal grants.
That's what I thought.
Oh, those properties included. All right. Well, that's interesting. Okay. Thank you. And again, the budget's coming out too late. I would be looking for line items for York and Susquehanna in the budget, but when it comes out in October, then our first, and I hope the documents will come with it this time in October. They have not in the past. And then in November, they are being finalized for approval in December. So that's not soon enough for the public to see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, so with that, I will turn to the consent agenda and turn this over to Board Vice President Matt Veggie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage to the consent agenda, solicited as items A through D. Nice to move. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will now turn to new business. And once again, I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Veggie.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is BOC oh four zero nine one four two three. Motion to ratify authorization for special counsel Kathleen Thomas to file Lilo action in Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas in the matter of Abington Township versus ADA LLC. Nice to move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Solicitor Clark, would you mind just providing a brief overview?
Certainly, Mr. Hecker. Ms. Thomas is special counsel to the Business Tax Office. After consultation with Treasurer Blumenthal, myself, and Mr. Manfredi, we have decided that it's necessary to file a lawsuit in the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas against business Carmen's Auto Group, which is owned by ADA LLC. The business is located at seventeen oh five Eastern Road in Willow Grove, and they have not paid their taxes from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-two. They are currently delinquent in the amount of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. The audits have been completed, and it is our opinion that a lawsuit should be filed to recover these delinquent taxes.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. Are there any questions or comments for members of the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Last item of new business is BOC dash zero five zero nine one four two three. Motion to approve a settlement regarding the appeal of the zoning hearing board decision regarding nine seven four Leopard Road and authorize the solicitor to execute the stipulation of settlement and take all necessary steps to resolve the appeal. Nice to move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Solicitor Clark, once again, I'll ask you for a brief overview.
Thank you, President Hecker. The township is currently defending an appeal of the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two decision of the zoning hearing board denying an application for the property owners regarding the height of a fence in the front yard. The property is a corner lot. The fence itself is located in what on any other lot would be considered the rear yard. There was no opposition to the application at the hearing, and eleven neighbors submitted letters of support. The yard contains a pool which this fence both will screen and enclose. We have negotiated a settlement for the property owners to install plantings as screenings to soften the impact of the fence height along the side road for the neighbors. The property owners will install eight shrubs and two hydrangeas to screen each section of the fence. The property owners will also be required to maintain and replace the plantings as necessary, and we're asking for approval to settle this matter and for us to execute the stipulation settling the matter in the Court of Common Pleas.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. Are there questions or comments from members of the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
That concludes the new business, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President Veggie will now turn to matters of the Finance Committee, and I will turn to Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weinberg.
Thank you, President Hecker. First up, item FC zero one zero nine one four two three. Motion to approve the July two thousand and twenty-three expenditures in the amount of three million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, thirty-two cents, and salaries and wages in the amount of two million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine, oh, sorry, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, thirty-six cents, and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of October two thousand and twenty-three. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote?
Commissioners Baratsky.
Yes.
Rothman.
Yes.
De Placido.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Brown.
Yes.
Weinberg.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Depone.
Yes.
Carswell. Siegelmann.
Yes.
Bowe.
Yes.
Thriveber.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Vice President Veggie.
Yes.
President Hecker.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, FC zero two zero nine one four two three. Motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three dash zero one four, recognizing that the township's minimum municipal funding obligation for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-four with respect to the municipal non-uniformed employee, police, and non-uniformed employee defined contribution plans is nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, sixty-five dollars, three million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars, and two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars respectively. Nice to move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that concludes the Finance Committee agenda items for this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Weinberg, if I could impose, in the absence of Commissioner Carswell this evening, would you mind taking the Pension Committee item as well?
I would love to. Thank you. Thank you for asking. The only item in the Pension Committee is PC zero one zero nine one four two three. Motion approving a change in fees for the defined contribution plan participation to twenty dollars per planned member annually and set the fee schedules as illustrated in Exhibit E. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that would conclude the Pension Committee items for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. That concludes the voting agenda. We will now open it up for public comment on general matters of township business. If there's anyone here who wishes to come forward, please do so. Say your name, please. Okay.
In July, at the board meeting, I submitted a petition, my third one. The petition stated, "Abington is in decline. The area suffers from crumpled sidewalks and curbs. The area has litter and debris on a regular basis. I want the Abington Board of Commissioners and Township Manager to make maintenance a priority. The focus on land development is destroying Abington. Stop the development of more apartment complexes." This is my third petition. It was signed by five hundred people. I have not gotten any response to this petition. Why would that be, Mr. Hecker?
You've gotten plenty of responses to your questions, Ms. Kubel.
No, I submitted this in July. Please do not talk in a circle and a roundabout way. This petition received no responses two months ago. I did not get a letter from Mr. Clark. I did not get any new information about what is happening. I have shown you photographs, large-scale photographs, that you do not allow me to put on a projector here so that the community can see them. They're that bad. And they show you how the hospital has enormous amounts of dangerous blight, not litter. The buildings look like they're going to fall down in some cases there. And Abington Township actually rents a parking area there that was cleaned up by members that were with Joe Rooney, and that was not recognized at last month's meeting. And since that time, I have not gotten any information about why you would rent a parking area for the township that is so filthy that it took two truckloads of debris to be removed. Mr. Clark does not take Raymour and Flanagan to court. He allows them to continue building a dump site. I've contacted Mr. Weinberg, who almost two years ago was going to help me clear the dump site, and at this point, all I'm getting is he's going to go back, Mr. Weinberg, and look at the dump site. Oh, it's a dump site, and it's behind the leaves. But again, in the winter and the fall, the leaves will be cleared, and it will be a dump site. Nothing's being done. The fifteen-hundred block of Old York Road lined with broken-down, destroyed concrete, and nothing's being done. This has gone on for two and a half years, and more, and nothing's been done. You promised me one phone call two and a half years ago after I started a petition. You never returned that call. Not one call has ever been returned by you. You've made promises here that you would return the call, and you don't because you have no interest in helping with blight. Not one person has spoken out publicly about blight here. Not one commissioner has shown any interest.
Ms. Kubel, please wrap up your comments. Your time is expired.
What are you going to do? What is happening with this petition? I have not gotten responses to this petition. I have collected the names of five hundred more people. Did you get a petition from anyone who said they want apartment complexes? Over a thousand apartment complexes? Apartments? Did anyone say they want them?
Ms. Kubel, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
What is happening?
Your time has expired.
What is happening? You're refusing to answer.
This is a public comment period. You've made your comments. Please return to your seat.
We have taxation with no representation here.
Ms. Kubel, please take your seat.
What are you going to do?
I'm going to ask you to take your seat so we can proceed with the meeting. Please sit down. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please come forward. I just need your names and to verify that you're residents of the township.
My name is Sue Moser.
My name is Mary Baker.
My name's Kimberly Illingworth.
And my name is Rachel George.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. We live on the one hundred block of Cricket Avenue in the North Hill section of Glenside. We know that you know, but two houses on our block have been down to the beams for six years now, ugly and dangerous, deteriorating badly. This past Monday afternoon, the shell of a house, a so-called house, at one eighteen Cricket collapsed at five o'clock in the afternoon during a rainstorm. The house at one twenty-two Cricket is surely next. We were all just so lucky that no one was hurt. On any day on those six years, what if a kid or anyone was in one of those houses? They have been a magnet, a temptation for kids to check them out, including our kids. We've had to chase our kids out of those houses. In addition, what if a windy storm had taken the material from those houses onto or into our houses or properties? They have been an eyesore for our block, embarrassing, terrible for property values, but most importantly, you failed to protect people from possibly getting terribly hurt there. The topic was in front of you at nearly every meeting for five or six years. Why have you let Jim Sheridan allow this to happen? Apparently, the gas lines are still active at the houses. What if the collapse had taken out the gas meter at the front of one eighteen Cricket? This week, both houses are now much more dangerous than they were last weekend. So how long will it take for the houses to be demolished? And when they are, is debris going to float into our backyard again like it did when Jim Sheridan initially took the houses down to a shell? We need you to fix this situation fast.
There's no, like, no trespassing sign there. There's just bare, it's just a bare frame. So it's just asking for trouble.
Yeah, I have two kids, six and nine, and I try to avoid, I mean, our street doesn't have sidewalks, so try to avoid walking on that side of the street because it's just very tempting to be like, oh, look at that house over there. It's like, not, you know, it's just a frame of two houses. But now one has collapsed, so it's just kind of sunk in. So it's very hard for us to, I've had many visitors come to my house over the past five or six years, and they're like, what's happening with those houses over there? And they come back again, and it's like, it looks the same. What happens to those houses over there? So yes, we were, we came here concerned for our children, but also the value of our houses. We all live relatively right next to, across the street from those, from that property. So we're asking the Board to address that.
We appreciate you coming forward to address those concerns. Did you want to say something, Vice President Veggie?
Unless Commissioner.
Yes. Commissioner Brown?
Good evening, ladies. Thank you very much for coming to the board meeting this evening. I learned about the collapse of one of the buildings. As a matter of fact, this was on my own personal agenda to address, you know, shortly after I was appointed. I was out there already. I took many pictures, both from the street and from the back of the property. I do know that, and I took a picture of the card, John Messina from the township was out there as well assessing the situation. The buildings are both in danger of, it's imminent, imminent danger as they are right now, and it does need to be addressed. You are one hundred percent correct. And I will be working with Commissioner Veggie and the township officials to make sure that this is addressed in an expeditious manner, whatever it takes, because it's an eyesore, it's a danger, and like you've said, it brings your property values down. So you have my personal commitment that this will be addressed immediately and with the necessary veracity that it needs. Okay?
Do you think we can get some kind of a timetable on that? Because I literally look out my front door to these two abandoned houses, and our two neighbors have been coming to meetings for like the last five years. We've been told that the township was going to buy the houses from the builder and put a park there, but yet they just keep deteriorating. The one house at one twenty-two that didn't collapse, there's cinder blocks missing from the bottom. So there's no doubt that that one is going to collapse. In fact, when I heard it collapsed, I thought it was that one. So we've been waiting for quite some time. We've all been extremely patient.
I understand. And please understand, I was just appointed in June, right? So I'm, like I said, I'm trying to do my best to make sure I'm caught up to speed on what has been done and then what needs to get done so that we can come to a resolution. Commissioner Veggie may have some more details in regards to the inner workings of that. I'm not sure, but just know that it is my commitment to get it done.
Are you at least going to have the gas turned off there?
From what I understand, the gas has been turned off already.
But only the building collapsed. Before that, nothing was done.
Correct. It was, it was, now, I was talking with the folks from Razzies when I stopped by. They were outside, and they did let me know that Pico did come to shut off the gas there. Okay, so they were there when Pico did shut off the gas. So that has been done. But to your point, it's been going on for far too long, right? So like I said, it's my commitment to make sure that this is handled as expeditiously as we possibly can, right? We need to do things decently and in order, right? So there are laws that we have to follow, but I think if we bring the necessary parties to the table, that we could probably find a solution soon.
I guess we're all just wondering why over the last five years, there hasn't been any resolution to it.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I don't necessarily have an answer to that. From my perspective, from my content, there may be some other people in the room from the Board who may have some other context that we can either address from the dais or either after the meeting. But I think with enough people that are committed to making this happen and bringing this to as swift as possible conclusion, we can make it happen. Commissioner Veggie or?
The only thing I'll add is I know that one call was out there yesterday. The demolition is imminent. I don't have a date for when the demolition will take place, but everything is happening for that to occur. I can't commit to timelines. I don't know when it will be, but I know it's happening very, very soon. I just, I can't commit any more than that.
Matt, I think the first thing you need to do, okay, get a, get a structural engineer out there and make sure that last structure is safe. That's the first thing you got to do.
Yeah, but if it's being taken down, I mean, we're just raising it.
Neither structure is safe.
So yes, we will stay in regular contact as this work unfolds. I encourage you to be in regular contact with your Ward Commissioner to alert of any concerns. He will bring them forward to us, and we will make sure that this staff.
Like next month's meeting, we can expect an agenda of when this will all be taken care of.
Why don't you take my cellphone, okay? And then what I will do is I will make sure that I give you updates as I get them. As soon as I get an update, then I will relay that to you, okay? Personally, if you want to take my email and my cellphone, that would be great. That way I can give you updates.
Absolutely.
Okay? So my cellphone is?
I have a cellphone and email, and you didn't send me a return reply.
Okay. Ms. Kubel, you're out of order.
Cellphone is two six seven, two three five, three five zero three.
Three five zero three.
Correct. Two six seven, two three five, three five zero three. My township email is J. Brown, J. B. R. O. W. N. E. at Abington.gov.
Abington, PA.
Abington, yes, thank you.
Abington, PA.
Abington, PA.gov.
Abington, PA?
Abington, PA.gov.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I wanted to say, we have been very patient, and I don't want to have to call, like, Action News or something and have Call to Action come out in six months because still nothing is done.
I agree with you.
Because as everybody else, I have four kids and three grandchildren, and my house faces those two properties, and we've been looking at them for quite some time.
Okay. So why don't we do this? Why don't we make sure we talk after the meeting, and then we can maybe set up something? Maybe we can kind of meet, you know, outside of the board setting and make sure that we put our minds together to put some strategies together, how we can address that issue and some other ones. Okay?
If I can stay that long, we will. Otherwise, we need to get home to our kids.
Okay, I got you. I see you. I think we might almost be done.
We're done with, after a comment, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, Tara.
I could just add real quick. Ladies, before you leave, if you wouldn't mind giving Tara your information, I know Manager Manfredi had a call last week about this topic prior to the building collapsing. So if you could give Tara your information, and we can keep in touch as well with Commissioner Brown.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fran early North Hills.
Good evening.
I didn't know these ladies were going to speak. I didn't come up for that reason, but I'm very much on top of that. I was there all day today with the Razzies. Pico was there. It's turned off. The water company's there. It's turned off. I talked to Mr. Sheridan. He was there today. By the end of next week, it'll be leveled. I told him by tomorrow, it'll be fenced off, and it's totally being addressed. And the Razzies and myself are going to stay on top of this. And I know it's been a long time because there's been a sort of a match with the township about the sewer problems that was going on there. I don't know if people know about that, but it'll be addressed, and by the end of next week, it'll be gone. And then they'll go from there. But it'll be safe, guaranteed.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening. My name's Charles Boss or Chuck Boss. I live in the eleventh Ward on Highland, just right across the street on eleven hundred block. A few months back, I stood before you regarding rampant speeding and traffic violations occurring daily on eleven hundred block of Highland. For your information, over a six-day period in March of this year, the police department's own traffic survey recorded two thousand seven and thirty-three enforceable speeding violations. That's over six days. That's greater than four hundred and forty-three violations per day, their data coming from their survey, you know, in a six-day period. And these are just speeding violations. The four forty-three violations per day does not include drivers who blow through stop signs at Highland and Harz. These are real safety-related problems that need to be addressed. There are three intersections on eleven hundred block of Highland Avenue, Susquehanna, Guernsey, and Harz, right here, you know, right here what's going on. So however, there's only one pedestrian crosswalk, and that's at Susquehanna. So earlier this year, I submitted a non-emergency citizen service request to the township's website, you know, regarding this issue, requesting installation of pedestrian crosswalks at the other two intersections, at Guernsey and Harz. I'm unable to get a status on that request. You know, I'm not saying it's anybody's fault. It's just I go to the system. I don't know how to get a status on it. I don't know what's going on. We're talking about months back. So I have five items that I think where I address actually the biggest offenders. So since January, I retired in December. I worked for the Navy for, you know, thirty-five years under infrastructure. So it's like, since January, I've noticed patterns, and I'm able to identify several of the groups that are the biggest offenders. Number one, Jefferson Avenue Hospital employees driving to work in the morning and heading home late in the afternoon. Zero six fifteen to zero seven forty-five, it's a racetrack. You know, it's like they blow up Highland, and they hang a right, and they're going to either the first parking lot or the one on the left or even further down to the next parking lot. You know, it's like they just blow through the stop signs still. All right, here's a crazier one, too. Abington school bus drivers, which really blows my mind, given who they're actually driving in the school buses. You know, it's like, I can give you numbers, dates, you know, and times of these things. The school bus drivers and the school maintenance vehicle drivers blow down Highland Avenue. It's like, it's like, it's like a parade. There's a couple that actually are kind of respectful, you know, and I'm not saying stick to the twenty-five. I'm saying stay under thirty-five. These people are flying, you know, so it's like, they're number two. Number three, the public works vehicle drivers. But I have to caveat that because I spoke with, actually with, bear with me, because I spoke with Mike Jones earlier this month, and he has, and I noticed the change in their actions. It's like, you know, there's still some public works drivers out there, though, you know, that actually still speed, but for the most part, I think he did reach out to the lot, and it changed. So I have to, I talked to Mike. I appreciate that. Next thing is police vehicles, you know, so it's like, I've talked to Chief Malloy last week. I'll have following discussions with him. So he's going to reach out to them, but, and I'm not saying, these are not emergencies. They're just driving down. When I say, like, again, this is thirty-five miles, greater than thirty-five miles an hour, and I know that because my property is exactly a hundred and ten feet wide, exactly. I can time when they go by. I got a camera out there. It watches them seconds. It's like, you know, it's how quick they're going by. So, you know, it's like, so, and I've mentioned that to actually So, you know, it's like, so, and I've mentioned that to actually to the chief and to the deputy chief. Then la-- lastly, it's the remaining vehicles, the industrial vehicles, the dump trucks, the tractors, the trailers. I even brought that up with Mike Jones, I said, Mike, some of these trucks are ours, right? You know, some of these are Abbotton ones. It's like, I think he actually reached out to them, it's the contractor's not our problem. But it's the-- the remaining traffic's just, it's hard to identify who it is other than actually the companies on the trucks that go by. So there are five groups identified as the major offenders. It's like, and like I said, this is just 443 enforceable violations, speeding violations, not the ones that actually blow through the stops. So given the issues above, I have the following request for the board. Number one, the board direct all Abington Township departments in writing construct all the township vehicle drivers, you know, whether it's the school district, wastewater, PWD, APD, the Bay Postits speed limits, you know? Since there is a large volume of Abington vehicles that ride down 1100 Block of Highland, this will have a traffic calming effect. If they're driving actually to the speed limit, the people behind them can't be racing behind-- so it's like, I'm just asking, hey, commissioners, please reach out and direct in writing these-- these departments, hey, tell your folks, you're in-- you're in a government vehicle, you know, it's like, you know, or a township vehicle, drive it like, you know, you should be driving, not like actually you're driving like it, you know, at home.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to try to conclude soon. We're over time.
Okay, reach out Jefferson Abington Hospital in writing to remind their employees that they're by post at speed limits. Because I know they're a big tax thing. It's like, but, you know, having Abington Police Department start issuing tickets and traffic violations for, you know, for, you know, for stuff occurring. In my 30 years here, I haven't seen them issue one ticket. And I'll talk to Chief Malloy about that, he's been very helpful in my last discussion with him. It's like, but just tell them to start issuing tickets. And then pedestrian crosswalks installed in-- in those intersections that don't have them. Like I said, Guernsey and Harz, and it's like, you know, so. And lastly, the fifth request is speed cushions. You know, speed cushions work. I see them in Jenkin County somewhere over. It's like, you know, I'm not saying speed bumps, speed cushions, so. There are the five requests, so how do I go about actually following up those requests or doing more than that? I apologize for going by limit.
Well, I'll have to work through your commissioner.
Charlie, thank you for coming. Thank you very much for itemizing those. I can tell you, I-- I will certainly talk with, uh, with Manager Man Freddie about the issue of all township employees, and I will also reach out with your specific, you know, your specific directive to the supervisor of transportation of the school district. I mean, they're not township employees, but it's all part of the public sector. I'm gonna reach out to, uh, to our hospital liaison regarding putting out the word to everyone at the hospital about-- about their speeds.
So I-- go ahead, I'm sorry. I didn't mean--
No, no, no.
No, no, please, go. No, so facilitate that. I'll send, this is just a word document I wrote this afternoon. I'll come here. I'll send it to you, I'll copy Man Freddie, I'll copy Chief Malloy, I'll copy Mike, you know, Jones or whatever. So everybody's talking the same sheet of music. And then you can let me know what you plan to do, you know, it's like, but I'll send that to you tomorrow morning, okay?
And I'll see, see, I'll send you copies of all the emails that I send, including, say, to the school districts of the hospital. And, yeah, and I will, we can, you and I and the chief and the traffic safety unit can sit down and talk about the issue, and also Director Jones can sit down and talk about your, the items regarding crosswalks and your, what you talked about with speed cushions.
I see school kids walking down the street because they're going to school in the back, whatever. It's like, no crosswalks at Harz right here or at Guernsey, it's just, I don't get it. The next first car crosswalk is at 1200, which is like 20 feet up from the actual intersection.
Right. We'll sit down, and Charlie, I will sit down in these meetings face to face, we can sit down together with all the parties that we just listed to talk about this. But send me that, and I'll get it out to everybody.
You know, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Appreciate it. Anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? And if not, we'll turn to Zoom.
Mike Tobin, you're unmeted. Mr. Tobin, you have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Mike Tobin, Kirkwood Avenue. My questions involve the Economic Corporation, it was just formed. And I had sent questions to Matt, Rich, and Drew, and Matt got back to me, and Matt, I did not understand the-- the thing about the plans. I thought there were, I didn't realize those plans that you would send me. That's what I was asking for, copies of those plans. I didn't realize some of them were 17 years old that haven't been done yet. So I apologize, I did get them. Some of those plans are 17 years old, 10 years old, 11 years old. That's, that is pretty embarrassing. But anyway, so I saw those plans, so I appreciate that. What I am looking for is a list of the qualifications that you were gonna be looking for, for the executive director. I read the-- I read the emails you sent me, I cannot find a list of the qualifications. And like, the definition I'm using for qualifications is what abilities, what experience, training, education, things like that, that for that particular job, for the executive director's job, what are the qualifications that you were gonna be looking for, okay? So if somebody could answer that. And what will come first? Will the budget come first, the board of directors, or the executive director? Can somebody answer that now?
Mike, as I said in my email, nothing can happen until the EDC board is appointed, and we've not appointed the board, so they can't do a budget and they can't hire anybody. So that is the first step. We've not done that yet.
So the board of directors will be hiring the executive director?
Only the board of directors has that power.
Okay, so once the board of directors are picked, and that's the voluntary, that's the non-paid board of directors, once they are, are picked, then, then obviously, a budget would have to come next, and once the budget is done, they will know, they will, will they be the ones to write the qualifications, or will that be, that be the board of commissioners?
There's not necessarily gonna be any further qualifications written down on paper for the ED position. I can't comment any further than what I've already said in my email.
Okay, so if there's no qualifications required, then like, any, anybody could, anybody then is qualified?
Mr. Tobin, I've given you what is available to date. There's nothing else available to provide to you on your question.
Okay, so, so we formed a corporation, and like, I formed a couple corporations, and I don't think I've ever quite done it this way, where there was no budget, no plan on who's gonna work there, no qualifications written for who is gonna work there.
All right, Mr. Tobin, I'm gonna ask you to conclude your comments.
Yeah, that's fine. Just as from a, from the board of commissioners, the biggest, the biggest thing that you are responsible for, you are to be fiscally responsible for the township. That means our tax-paying dollars, because our tax-paying dollars are what's paying for this budget that we don't have and this board of directors that's not there, and executive director that you have no idea. Oh, so you guys already know who you're appointing? Never mind, okay, so--
Okay, Mr. Tobin, thank you. Your time has expired. That's just not true.
Laura Lehman, you're unmeted.
Wow, what a night. I know, it's, it's hard to know where to go. Thank you, first of all, for giving Mr. Bous enough time to deal with this very important issue. Everybody who has an important issue should get enough of your time, that you can't give another minute or two to hear people properly is, is, you know, one of the reasons that everything's like this. Secondly, I want to talk about the special friends in this community. Mr. Sheridan also had a house right across from, right near the township building that was in the same kind of condition, and Mr. Sheridan was given every leeway. None of the laws and codes were enforced on Mr. Sheridan, and he's not the only one. There are many special friends, and the rules are not enforced and, and put on those people, including Preet, where absolutely improper things happened, including Chevron Partners, who are now at 1209 Riddle Road, where the most obscene things happened, and you almost took those people to a conditional use hearing without even having the documents or the presentation at all beforehand. And Mr. Hecker, you still haven't answered how that possibly could happen, that five people who oversee that, or more than five, who oversee that, allowed that to slip through by accident. And this is absolute corruption. This is not how a township's supposed to be run. And that we have a manager who cannot get blight of this nature cleaned up, and that he keeps canceling the meetings, the vacant property board, that is about blight. Those things are really, really problematic. We should not have such a manager, we should have a new one. That is not acceptable, but it's also not acceptable for you guys to put somebody like that in charge. So we need, we need some new people in your seats if you're not gonna step up. So this is, Mr. Hecker, I would like you to answer, I asked you in a couple of different ways now. When you said that the Albator Park is not going to be opened up by this board, did you mean this board that is there until December and January? We have a new board with different people on it? And so I actually would like to have an answer for that as soon as I'm done speaking. I also would like to try and understand how you approved Nifty 50s when they did not have the parking that they needed, on the hope that maybe they might get parking? That's not acceptable, and that happened at 100 York, and it is causing a master disaster for the people there and for our police, and therefore for the pockets of the residents of this township.
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments.
Well, May 25th, we had a meeting where Mr. Van Freddy told us he was going to take our comments about the future land use chapter, he was going to summarize them and give us answers to our questions. We never had those.
That will happen. That is still, is still in the works.
Is then, then the chapter that was posted since is not the final chapter?
Nothing's been final, because it hasn't been vetted by the board. I mean, that would be ultimately the next step in the process after public input, and that's what we've said, and that's what we'll do. Please conclude your comments.
But you would first get the answers, and you would get the, the questions answered, and then you would create your chapter when you knew that you were on the same page. And we didn't say, oh, wait, no, you misunderstood that, we meant this and this and this, and then you would create your chapter. It seems that you created your chapter, and the chapter that I see is in stark contrast to the comments that we made.
Again, Ms. Lehman, that has not been vetted by the board, and so that will happen moving forward. Thank you for your comments.
Those comments, please.
Richard Vath, you're unmeted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Richard Vath, 1719 H Hill. I'm just following up on an email I sent last week, and follow up to a conversation about access to overlook from our side of 63. I sent it with some photographs to help illustrate the issue.
Yes, you did, sir, and I, I do owe you a response, along with Commissioner Carswell. I've had an extended illness in my family that has kept me from focusing on things the last couple of weeks. I'm just starting to dig out.
Okay, sorry to hear that.
No, I appreciate your patience, but I'll be back in touch with you.